Uh. Controlling the breath breathing here. Okay, you all set? You ready? Okay, good evening, everybody. Let me call to order the regular meeting of the St. Helena City Council for January 26th, 2016. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Pitts, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Black, roll call.
Mayor Galbraith.
Here.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Kroll.
Here.
Doring.
Here.
Pitts.
Present.
Next item on our agenda is public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the for- of the public to address us on matters not on our agenda this evening, and if you speak, you're limited to three minutes, strictly enforced. So, does anybody wish to speak at public forum? Okay, seeing none, we then go to reports by staff and city council. Let me start with staff, and let me start with the city manager, Ms. Phillips.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council community. I just had a couple of announcements. We have a fair housing workshop tomorrow at the firehouse, starting at 5:00. If you'd like to join, it's open to the public. On February 11th, we've set a date for the council goal-setting session, very important session for the council and the community to talk about what they would like to see accomplished, or work to begin on for the city, for the fiscal year 1617. That's February 11th, from 9:00 to 4:00, again, at the firehouse. The Revenue Source Task Force will be meeting again, possibly its last meeting, this Friday, the 29th, at 9:00 at City Hall, and we're hoping that a final report will come out from that task force for the February 9th council meeting.
All right. Ms. Metz?
Just wanted to let the council know and the public know that we are working on our mid-year budget report, so I will be reporting out on that at the next council meeting on February 9th.
All right, Ms. Black?
I'm excited to acknowledge Zinnia is here tonight, so she's in training to help out with the council meetings, and of course, she also has been attending the planning commission meeting, too, so just enjoying to have her here.
All right, and last name is Gamaro?
Gamaro, yes.
I was close, all right. That's good. Planning director?
Nothing to add tonight, Mayor.
Mr. Palmer, Public Works Director?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Pitts?
Nothing, thank you.
No, thank you.
Mr. Doring, Mr. White? All right, and I have nothing to add, maybe, other than one quick comment. I attended the, as a director, the Napa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District meeting this evening, and the one interesting tidbit I heard, we all have heard that we need 150% of rainfall to, to work our way out of the statewide drought, and what I heard, which was interesting, was that this was not an engineering number, but really, a number, a guesstimate, that engineers in the state had come together on, so they had something simple to feed to the press. So, 150% may not do it, it may do it, but I hope we're in for a lot more rainy weather. So, that takes us to the oath of office for St. Helena Police Officer Stephen Coltrip.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for having us tonight. I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce you to St. Helena's newest officer, Stephen Coltrip, tell you a little bit about him, and, and then we're going to do a swearing in to his oath of office. Steve came to us after we lost an officer to another agency, and we did an exhaustive search, and Steve came out on top, number-one candidate. He's a Napa County resident, raised in Yountville, went to Vintage Hive, which we won't hold against him, but he passed through his background packet, anyway. He's served four years in the Marine Corps, did a tour in Iraq, and he came back and put himself through the academy, and went to work at the jail, where he worked for nine years, which is fortunate for us, because he gained just an unbelievable amount of experience working in that facility with the type of people that we run into on the street on a day-in, day-out basis. So, the, the amount of knowledge and experience and life experience that he brings to us is not the same as somebody else that comes in fresh out of college, or fresh out of the academy with only a couple months on. He's got a couple months, October, so he's got four, almost five, months with us, but he's got, you know, a lot more worldly experience than somebody else with five months. So, we're thrilled to have him, it's fantastic. He sailed through his field training program, and he's out on his own as a solo officer and doing a great job, so we're happy to have him.
Terrific, and welcome aboard, and-
Welcome.
Now, we have the swearing in, Ms. Black. And she always does a better job than Chief Justice Roberts.
I'll have you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Stephen Coltrip.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend-
That I will support and defend.
-the Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
-and the Constitution of the State of California-
The Constitution of the State of California.
-against all enemies-
Against all enemies.
-foreign and domestic-
Foreign and domestic.
-that I will-
That I will.
-bear true faith-
Bear true faith.
...and allegiance-
And allegiance.
-to the Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
-and the Constitution of the State of California-
The Constitution of the State of California.
-that I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely.
-without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservation.
-or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion.
-and that I will-
And I will.
-well and faithfully-
Well and faithfully.
-discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties.
-upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
(laughing).
This is my daughter, Kimberly.
Good, welcome. Well, take your time.
Thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you very much. All right, that takes us to our consent items. And again, any member of the council, any member of the public can pull a consent item, just let me know, hopefully, as we go through them. Seven, second reading of proposed modifications to the St. Helena Municipal Code, Chapter 2.48, to repeal sections authorizing a private fire department corporation and establish the fire department as a city department. Eight, second reading of an ordinance amending Title 17 of the Municipal Code relating to cottage food admini- operations in dwellings. Nine, second reading of an ordinance adding Chapter 17.126 to the St. Helena Municipal Code to prohibit marijuana cultivation dispensaries and deliveries within the city of St. Helena, subject to limited exceptions, and repealing St. Helena Municipal Code, Chapter 9.18. And the city clerk presented us with a new version this evening that contains one small administrative change, so that's what we would be approving. An administrative change does not change the fact that it's a second reading. Ten, second reading of proposed amendments to the city's purchase, purchasing ordinance, St. Helena Municipal Code, Chapter 3.04.175, procurement process for declared emergencies. Eleven, administrative correction to ordinance 2015-8, amendments to the city purchasing system ordinance, St. Helena Municipal Code 3.04, purchase of supplies, equipment and services, and procedures for public works. The proposed correction corrects the erroneous dollar figure in Section 3.04230D from 185,500 to 187,500. So, assuming, I see nobody seeking to pull any item from the consent calendar, so I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve, items seven through 11, with the change to number nine, the administrative change.
Second.
Ms. Black?
Vice Mayor White.
Yes.
Councilmember Kroll.
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. That takes us to item 12, consideration of proposed approval of a resolution adopting a tentative parcel map extension request for an extension of previously approved tentative parcel map 2005-77, which subdivides an existing 40,946-square-foot site into four individual parcels for a single-family residential development at 1486 Sulfur Springs Avenue, and the clerk is also here, presenting us with a new resolution that contains a minor administrative change. So, with that, lead staff, Mr. House, you seem to be on a lot tonight, so.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. As you mentioned, the project before you tonight is a tentative map extension, requesting extension of a map 20577, which subdivided an approximately 40,000-square-foot site into four individual parcels for single-family residential development at 1486 Sulfur Springs Road. The parcel sizes range from 9,200 to around 1,100 square feet, and they will be located in the medium-density residential district. This is an aerial photo of the site, highlighted there in yellow. It's currently two parcels, developed with two single-family homes. This, this map has had quite a history. The subdivision was originally approved a number of years ago. In response to the recession, the legislature passed a number of automatic extensions to grant life to these maps in response to the lack of development for residential projects, and so this project definitely benefited from those extensions. And then, the, in, in April of 2014, the council granted a subsequent extension to the approval, and then this map would, this is a second extension to that map. This is the existing and proposed site plan with the current configuration of the parcels on the top of the slide there, and the proposed configuration on the bottom. They'd all be accessed by a driveway along the eastern frontage, as you can tell. There are setbacks identified there as building envelopes. The subdivision was not identified as deficient in any of the standards, so staff is recommending approval. The two existing residences would be relocated or demolished, depending on their condition, so that is reflected in the conditions. And the only issue that came up in the review of the project, actually, before I get to that, let me go over the, the fact that the project was approved through a, the SEQA element of the project was approved through a mitigated negative declaration. Design review will be required for future development. A use permit would be required if it was necessary, depending on what the development on each individual parcel is proposed. Staff has received no correspondence on the project. As I mentioned, the, the only issue that was identified is the, the project was originally conditioned to construct curb gutter and sidewalk, which is identified in Alternative 1 in the project packet. It shows the frontage improvements, full-width travel lane, curb gutter, planter strip, sidewalk, which is a typical frontage improvements. However, if you've been down Sulfur Springs, you'll recognize that there, those, those improvements don't exist anywhere along Sulfur Springs, or in very few places, and not in the close proximity to this site, with the exception of where an adjacent street comes in, which is Arrowhead Drive, a little bit to the west of the site. The applicant requested relief from having to construct those improvements, and so, to provide the council with an exhibit as to what that would look like. Alternative 2 shows a decomposed granite pathway, adjacent to a drainage swale, so the, the frontage setback would still meet the ultimate right-of-way requirements for making the improvements that were conditioned. However, if the council chooses to grant the exception that the applicant has requested, those improvements would not be required to be constructed at the time of the, the subdivision or recordation of the final map, but they would be required to pay an INLU fee to cover the cost of those for, at some point, when the city would develop those in the future. I do believe that that INLU fee mechanism has not been utilized in recent history in St. Helena, however, typically, when someone, previously, when people have requested to not have to construct these standards, it's, it's often come after the appeal period for the approval has passed, and, and staff has consistently required frontage improvements to be constructed on other discretionary projects that have come before staff or the planning commission. So, given that, the planning department recommends that the city council find the project compliant with SEQA, and give direction on the design of the proposed frontage improvements, and approve the extension of the tentative parcel map. The modification is that the date of the expiration identifies January 2017, that's erroneous, and actually, this, if the extension is granted, it will expire June 6, 2016, and that has to do with some of the timing it took to get the exhibits that were requested by staff from the applicant provided in the packet.
Can you clarify the concept of the INLU fee, and what that would potentially, or hypothetically, cover? Is that for deferred improvements of curb and gutter, or deferred improvements of other alternative frontage?
I believe it's curb gutter and sidewalk, but I'll ask Public Works Director Palmer to chime in on that.
Right, the, the concept would be that they would fund the improvements that would be necessary in the ultimate configuration, so they would construct interim improvements, the DG path and swale, and contribute money to the city to be able to ultimately build ultimate width and curb gutter sidewalk.
What if it never happens?
That's a good question. What happens is, if they contribute the fee, then the city is somehow committing that, at some point in the future, the city will build those improvements.
Or what if, what if, when it does happen, it's three times more, costs three times more? I mean, those are the two sides of the-
And that would be a risk, in approving the alternative fee and not requiring the frontage improvements.
It suggests to me that it's that alternative risk that has caused the city not to go down this path previously, as at Arrow, was it Arrowhead Drive there?
Well-
Where, where the improvements are right on Sulfur Springs.
That's correct. Arrowhead Drive, the improvements wrap onto Sulfur Springs for the intersection, and then stop.
Yeah. Well, any further initial questions by council?
I guess, for me, just the, the initial question is sort of laying out, could you just lay out the benefits and the costs of having those curb and gutter improvements in terms of things like, just safety, public safety, maybe traffic calming, potentially, those kinds of things, so that we have a, just a sort of a layperson's sense of, of that issue?
Sure, so, you know, if, if you're a pedestrian, or a cyclist, but if you're a pedestrian walking down the street, having formal improvements gives you a sense of security and safety, because you have, and for drivers, it delineates where the pavement ends, obviously, with the curb, and then, as a pedestrian, you have a little bit of a buffer, because there's a planter strip, it's typically six to eight feet wide, and then the sidewalk is obviously ADA-compatible, all those things, so that's the benefit. Kind of the flip side of that is, those don't exist anywhere north or south, or, I'm sorry, east or west of the site, so you kind of have a sidewalk to nowhere. However, that is how public improvements are often constructed, is piecemeal, because that's, as we, as development occurs, that's how we get them.
And do we have a ADA requirement to do this? I mean, is there some sort of ADA?
The frontage improvements would be required to meet ADA requirements.
If done.
So, the, the interim improvements would not meet ADA, most likely, the decomposed granite pathway.
And we, that's, that's, that's not problematic?
We have not identified problems at that?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't really evaluated what this, what that section would look like, and this point is just conceptual, so when they come for review, that's what it would look like. I think, my knowledge of ADA at this point, is that DG can be ADA-compliant, if it's prepared and constructed correctly, but it doesn't meet the, it doesn't meet the definition of a sidewalk, in that regard, so. And speaking further to the need of the sidewalk, I mean, this, this does meet general plan guidelines, it, it does meet the complete streets requirements, it's required by MTC of the city when we construct new roadways. It's something that is normally required of a subdivision.
All right.
I got one question. Looking down the road to the future, what would trigger a sidewalk from the entrance into Magnolia Oaks up to Sul- or-
South Queen.
South Queen.
North Queen.
Anything?
South Queen, yeah.
Yeah.
Typically, it would be development projects, so as those individual parcels develop, if we got curb gutter and sidewalk on this site, and, and parcels came in for a design review application to maybe do a significant modification to existing home, or to demolish and rebuild an existing home, at that time, given that we would have those improvements in close proximity, we would probably request them for the projects that were coming in for redevelopment of those parcels, but separate from a development application, it would take a city-initiated public works project.
So, I have another question. I, I drove down that street today intentionally to look at it, and there is another house that is undergoing a fairly large, a fairly, it looks like fairly major, are we requiring them to do this as well?
I believe, going from memory, I believe that site just went through design review. The nexus for constructing frontage improvements is a little bit different for design review than it is for a subdivision, nexus being the legal trigger that you have. We often require it for design review, but that's typically in established neighborhoods where there are frontage improvements in close proximity. In this situation, or in the situation you're referencing, frontage improvements were not required by the city for that design review application.
Okay, I have more comments, but not questions.
All right, let me, let me open it up for a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak at public hearing with respect to this? Mr. Hardy, please identify yourself.
Thank you, Mayor Galbraith, Lester Hardy, 1513 Tanner Street, St. Helena. I represent the applicants, Rob Greer and Bob User. But for the request for approval of alternate treatment of the frontage, I think this is really a pretty straightforward request for an extension of the map, which we earnestly hope you will approve, whether you like our sidewalk proposal or not. Clients are eager to move forward and do the rest, and there isn't really very much that needs to be done to complete the tentative map requirements and record the final map. Staff has been very helpful and very straightforward in addressing the subject of alternative standards for this street frontage, and it has always been something that we anticipated would be presented to the council for, you know, your discretion and, and decision. I would like to say that, you know, I'm certainly, in my perspective on this, rather strongly influenced by what may be now the distant past, when a previous public works director's proposal to make some improvements on Madrona to city standards met with a hue and cry. At one point, I thought he might be run right out of town, so, you know, I think there is some very real question as to what, in terms of the city's sort of unwritten policy or public sentiment, how everyone describes it, what, what that really is on these more rural streets, you know, in comparison with the standards that you have in your subdivision ordinance, and, and historically, they have not fit together very well. And, and so, Mr. Greer, looking at his property and the rest of Sulfur Springs, and discussing with his engineers, the requirement for construction of sidewalks, quite honestly, simply came to the conclusion, that didn't seem to make much sense. But, you know, we're, all we really asked for was the opportunity to present you with an alternative, and let you decide, so that we can move forward.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Why do you think it doesn't make any sense, Mr. Hardy?
That would be because we, we think the net result, for decades, if not longer, is an isolated island of sidewalk and curb. We're not seeing much potential for extension of that on either side.
All right, any further public comment? I'll close the public comment and invite council discussion.
Well, my, 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 when, when I saw this, I was immediately reminded, I know of two homes recently, and, and there may be more, just those two people happened to contact me, where they were required to put in sidewalks and curbs on a street that had no other sidewalks and curbs, so, a little bit, the sidewalk, it was the same type of situation, and we did not allow them any leeway. Now, there may have been extenuating circumstances, like they passed the appellate period, or whatever, but we didn't, we made them put the curbs and gutters in, and the sidewalk in. So, I'm just saying that my, my concern is that everybody's treated fairly, and that, and that if we have a standard, the standard applies to everybody, and so, I mean, I didn't come up with this policy. I'm kind of surprised that the house up the street, I don't know what the trigger is in our planning, I'm kind of surprised the house up the street wasn't required to do it, because it seems like it was a similar type of remodel that the house on Scott Street had, that was required to put the, and, and the same thing, the Scott Street House offered to put money in, an INLU fund, and et cetera. So, I, I'm just concerned with general fairness. I'm, I also think, on the, on one hand, I think it looks, it might look a little odd to have just a random piece of sidewalk, however, I do think that if this is going to be our policy, it should be our policy, and we shouldn't pick and choose where to enforce it. I also think that there may be some safety issues, I don't know. I mean, I don't think decomposed granite looks badly, I think it looks, it can look quite nice, so, I just, I just, it recently came up, and, on Scott Street, and there was no other house on that side of the street that had a curb and gutter, and now there's one house with it, or two houses, because they happen to be next door to each other. Those are my comments.
All right, Mr. Pitts?
So, you know, putting legality and safety aside for a second, we'll come back to it. There have been instances on Hudson and a few other streets that I would say are the transition from the urban area into the ag area, where we have not required these sidewalks and gutters and curbs to be put in, and, and we've granted, I guess, I don't know if it was a variance or an exception, to the rule. And I think there's a discussion, it's more of a policy issue, but part of maintaining the character, while the general plan may say that we want complete streets, I think there's, part of our character is this agrarian feel, and on the edge of town, when you're next to transition into vineyards, I think it's an appropriate place to maybe not curb and gutter and urbanize, you know, those, those streets. And I can see an exception in those areas, however, if we're going to do it, I think we should, we should make that sort of change throughout all of town versus piecemealing, but I got to tell you, it's, for me to say, you've got to do it now, and then have that curb and gutter, and not have it anywhere else before we've had the larger discussion of, you know, do we really want to make that policy change to, to preserve the character and the agrarian feel, is short-sighted, and, and we should probably postpone the decision. I, I do think we should make this extension tonight regardless. And, you know, the INLU fee on something that might, you know, maybe there's some other mechanism, if they're going to pay the INLU fee, then it's like, well, I might as well put it in, versus not, maybe, there is, I've seen in the past some deferred installation or improvement agreements, where in the event that someone doesn't make the improvement, if and when the complete street adoption ever were to happen, occurred, then a lien can be placed on the property to force them to make that payment for the improvements, whatever they cost at that point. occurred, then a lien can be placed on the property to force them to make that payment for the improvements, whatever they cost at that point in time. So, the agreement's made upfront, there's a mechanism to extract that payment down the road, if and only if the, the, the improvements are made. So, anyway, those are my thoughts.
Mr. Doring?
Well, I agree, I agree very much with what you're saying. I, I, I think it is kind of bizarre just to have one house or one, one development have the, the improvements. I, I think we should sort of come to a conclusion in-house, basically, do we want that street to be paved or not, all the way? And then we figure out what's the best way of doing that. In my mind, it would make more sense to not do it piecemeal, to have a little bit broader scope whenever that issue comes up, say, maybe in three or four years from now, when we know we have several developments going on, or those several developments have put enough money into a pot where we can then have a lo- a longer paved area. That makes more sense than just to have this one area paved. But the, on the other hand, the other argument, at least in my mind, is I hear a lot of complaints about people speeding on that particular street to, to use that, that road to cut through town. I use that road, I never speed. You know, so that's why I asked about the traffic calming nature of having sidewalks and curbs and those things. I think there is a public safety issue there. So, I'm kind of torn between those two policy issues. You know, I, I agree with you, Greg, just to have it, you know, have them build on that one particular spot without having more sort of development of sidewalks all the way down, that's kind of problematic. I think it doesn't really do much. But it would be, I really, whatever the staff thinks is the best-case scenario for the best public safety and slowing traffic down there is what I would be in favor of. I think that's, that's the issue for me. Cars are going forty, fifty miles an hour on that road. I was there today, by the way, I should announce, I did drive by there. I drive by there pretty much all the time, but go by and saw the site. So, yeah, I could see the applicant's point of view. No one else has sidewalks there, you know, what, this doesn't make sense to have an island. But getting, getting more public safety, more, more traffic calming measures there is what really I'm concerned about.
Can I ask two questions from, from your comments?
Sure.
So, one is, if, if sidewalks did go in, would it be on both sides of the streets or just one side?
Just the project frontage.
Okay, the other side of the street wouldn't happen in the future? That street would just be programmed to have the north side of the street with a, with a sidewalk?
Well, I can't, I, I can't say it wouldn't happen in the future, however, across the street is designated for agriculture, so it wouldn't, a development application wouldn't come in as long as it was designated agriculture, that would trigger frontage improvements.
Okay, and then number two, if you put this sidewalk and then the planting strip, does it leave room on that road for bike paths to also be installed in the future? Is there adequate width? And, you know, could we also use calming measures like a medrona? People think they're bike paths, but those stripes were put in as a calming measure, not as a, as a bike path. They sort of double, but.
Yeah, it, it is designated, the Bicycle Master Plan is having a bike lane, not a path, but on the street, striped lane, yes. And the drawing here do show a striped area that would be, could be a bike lane. It's hard to read on there.
Right across the street, is it, did, are there curbs and gutters right here where Arrowhead Drive starts?
That's right.
So, it's just the vineyard right across the street, and then just north of there, or just west of there is where it start?
So, you can just barely see where Arrowhead comes in on the bottom of the, the aerial there, and so it wraps and then stops.
Does it stop at the vineyard, or no, before it stops at the house?
I believe it stops at the house. I'm going from memory, and so it's always dangerous, but I believe it just, the, the, the intersection flare, and then it stops, that's correct.
Yeah.
And what part of the south side of Sulfur Springs Avenue is county and not city? I know Arrowhead is in the city limits, but it's kind of like a little peninsula. And Harvest Inn is in the city limits, but I think everything else is.
Because we did a Williamson Act on that vineyard, I thought, so I think that's part of the city.
And I guess my point is, I mean, if you come down the road, the Palladini Vineyard is, is ag, zoned ag in the city limits, and then, and then everything down the street further is, on the south side, I think, is in the county. So, the likelihood of ever having development that would be contiguous all the way down that street is only if the city decided it was going to do it.
Yeah, so it's, it's six parcels from the intersection of Arrowhead to the kind of southwest are in the city. After that, it stops, goes county. And getting to your point, I, from, from staff's perspective, the likelihood of getting sidewalks on the north, northern side of Sulfur Springs would probably be from Main Street or the next intersection just to, just past this site where, where residential development is, and most likely would not occur after that unless the city initiated a large-scale public works project.
And then at the corner, there's just the three lots that are, that are zoned medium-density residential, and then you go around the corner and it's all vineyard all the way down to the park.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, so, I guess my thoughts are, is I'd rather see the DG path and room left for a bicycle path and starting, trying to integrate that all the way down the, the street. I mean, there's more of a likelihood, and, and the economics of doing something like that across the ag parcel kind of makes a little bit more sense than ever thinking that we're ever going to have a sidewalk going down the street.
I do like Greg's idea of the lien, though, in case, in the, in the event that there would be, that this does happen in the future, they would have to pay their fair share. But I do think it also calls for a, somewhat of a policy decision later, because it's not really fair that one resident has to put it in and the other one doesn't.
Well, and maybe that's something that we can discuss for the, for the general plan, is that there are certain areas that, yeah, we would recognize that, that there should be, you know, full streets and, and sidewalks in other areas like this that, that's never going to happen.
This has been an issue, too, in the past couple of years.
Yeah, I mean, if this, if this were on Hudson Avenue, I would have a different view, but I, so I think I accept the views of my colleagues here. And I also very much like the lien idea as opposed to taking the money, because if it's way off in the distance, we all know that that money is to, would just sit in the account, it would do nothing, and it would not be adequate to provide the improvements for curb, gutter and sidewalk. So, I, to me, here, there seems to be pretty much of a consensus that we should approve the tentative parcel map extension request, that we should not require the improvements to be put in at this point in time, and that we should demand that the, in place, that the properties be lien such that if it comes about that the improvements can be put in or should be put in, then the money is there to do it.
I don't think we want necessarily, or can lien the property today, but we can have a deferred improvement agreement that goes with the four parcels, and they can break up how that deferred improvement is shared amongst the, the owners. And if, if they don't make those improvements, then a lien would be placed on the property, something like that.
Well, all I'm trying to say is, without being too technical about it, is that the deferred improvement agreement would have to be of record.
Correct.
Right, recorded, recorded.
Recorded, yes.
We're not going to figure it out tonight, but I think we can give direction to staff to research that.
And if that doesn't work, then he, then they need to pay the INLU fees. If we can't work that out, then, then they need to pay the INLU fees.
Hear from Mr. Hardy.
It's Lester.
All right, let me, let me open the public hearings.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I was just going to say, as there are already some other documents, agreements that need to be prepared and submitted to staff for approval pursuant to the conditions of the tentative map already in place, things that we have to do before the final map can be recorded. At least conceptually, I don't see any reason why a deferred improvement agreement consistent with this discussion can't be added to list. It makes sense to me. It's certainly preferable to my client to the INLU fee. And as I say, there, there are other documents that I need to prepare and submit for staff approval anyway, so it, I think it fits pretty easily into the workflow that's in front of us, regardless.
Just for a point of clarification, when would that, that improvement, that deferred improvement agreement be triggered? Under what general circumstances are you thinking about? Any other development, or, I mean, we should?
I, I, that's a good question. Probably, I mean, maybe it's if a sidewalk is installed to the adjacent, adjacent to the property, north or south, or east or west, where it could actually go to somewhere, which means a larger project would have been done, or we would have decided to move forward with a more aggressive plan to create that improvement along the street.
Makes sense. I don't know what staff has in mind there.
Well, no, no, and I were just chatting about that. I think the ones I've seen in the past, deferred improvement agreements are kind of open-ended, and it's at the discretion of the city. So, it's up to staff, whatever time we determine we want it, we can ask for it, and that's, that's the way I've seen it. I did, I did want to ask if I could, clarification on the improvements doing now. The exhibit now doesn't show any kind of widening for a bike lane. And I think what I'm hearing, what I heard earlier was that that's the council's desire, is to make sure we get that through that segment, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
Yes.
So, what, so what staff has heard here is, is a direction to modify the proposed resolution to work with the applicants to try to draft an improvement agreement to require their fair share of, their fair share of costs tied to the four parcels to cover the cost of frontage improvements in keeping with city standards at such time when that's appropriate, and the language will be worked out with the applicant. Or get an INLU fee if the improvement agreement cannot be agreed upon. And the frontage improvements are required, are, are, are in keeping with the proposed alternative to, except that the paving shall be widened to accommodate a bike lane, widened and striped to accommodate a bike lane.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, I assume we need a formal vote, because we're dealing with a tentative parcel map extension. So, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the tentative parcel map extension along with the deferred improvement agreement, as just articulated by our planning director.
So moved.
All in favor?
Peter?
I, I, I moved. Peter seconded.
I was thinking that.
The great saint did it this time.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Could we also agendize a discussion about the, of the broader policy reasons for this, so that six months from now, we're not having the same discussion with another house somewhere else in town?
Sure.
Yes, that's actually been on Director Palmer's list. We've talked about that for many months now, so we'd be happy to bring that forward in the months ahead.
All right. Next item on our agenda, number thirteen. Introduction and first reading of zoning text amendment, amendments to the city zoning code, chapter seventeen point four zero, eliminating certain floor area ratio exemptions in medium-density residential district. And again, Mr. House, I think you're on.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you mentioned, the, the project before you tonight is an ordinance to amend the municipal code, chapter seventeen point four zero, to eliminate certain floor area ratio exemptions from the medium-density residential district. This project has been found to be exempt from the requirements of SEQA under the general rule. The topic of floor area ratios have been of interest to the Planning Commission recently, as many projects that come before the commission propose to maximize the allowable floor area ratio in the medium-density district, specifically because the majority of the city is designated for medium-density. The Planning Commission's concern is that the maximization of the allowable FAR has a potential to negatively impact the appearance and character of some of these residential neighborhoods, especially given the historic character of a number of them. In response, on August fourth of last year, the commission recommended amending the medium-density residential zoning district to eliminate two of the allowable floor area ratio exemptions from the allowable maximum floor area ratio. And those proposed eliminations were to eliminate the allowance for two hundred square feet of covered parking. So, currently, only one of your, or you're required to construct one covered parking space, and that does not go against your allowable floor area ratio. The second that's proposed to be, was proposed to be eliminated by the Planning Commission is the allowance for balconies, porches or decks where at least one of the longest dimensions, dimensions is unenclosed. So, that is also proposed by the Planning Commission to be eliminated. From staff's perspective, eliminating the two hundred square foot exemption for covered parking would result in minimal impacts of future development and architectural design other than the intended goal of reducing the overall floor area of these newly constructed homes. The second exemption proposed to be eliminated by the commission for that for balconies, porches and decks could have broader impacts on the architecture and design of single-family homes that are proposed here in the city. You know, real estate values are based primarily on square footage, and so if, if individuals are proposing to develop homes for their, to maximize the financial value, they're going to be doing that to maximize the square footage. And they could propose to eliminate porches or decks in favor of additional interior square footage, given that they would, if this exemption did not allow them to construct those in addition to the maximum floor area ratio. So, from a design standpoint, balconies, porches provide important character-defining elements, especially in historic areas or, or when adjacent to historic homes, balconies and porches are, specifically porches are essentially an integral part of a lot of architectures, craftsmen architecture specifically, which we have a lot of in town. So, from staff's standpoint, elimination of this exemption could have some unintended consequences on the design of architecture that's proposed here in the city. Staff did also receive four comments on the proposed ordinance revisions, all of which generally express the same concerns over potential impacts to architectural design. So, it's recommended by the Planning Commission and the community improvement, Planning and Community Improvement Department that the council find the project exempt from SEQA, consider the proposed revisions, and provide direction to staff to amend the city's medium-density residential district for, with regards to floor area ratio exemptions. Available for any questions.
Any initial questions before I open the public hearing?
I've got one. At the August fourth meeting with the Planning Commission, I think both you and, and Aaron talked about coming back with some more comprehensive approach to FARs and, and the plan review. How close are you?
So, we've begun, I can't say we're close. We have begun looking at the, we have begun looking at FAR in general. One of the things that Aaron noticed is the formula, the table needs some work for those formulas, they're a little bit inconsistent. And then, given the direction from the commission, there may be some more, more kind of strategic exemptions or other elements that could be done to get the same result, but maybe still, or maybe not have some of the unintended consequences that are potential for eliminating the porches and, and balcony exemption. So, I can't say we're close, but we have begun to look at it and probably could get that back before the commission in the next, in the coming months.
I, I have a question, but maybe, I'm, maybe it's, in, I was just wondering, is there some legal reason or some reason that we can't just reduce the FAR?
There, there is no legal reason not to do that.
I, all right, just was wondering if that was.
One other question.
It would have to go through the Planning Commission first.
Right, right, right.
Okay, go ahead.
Would, do you consider removing the two hundred square foot parking exemption as potentially having an unintended consequence of disincentivizing second covered parking spaces and therefore inadvertently putting more cars on the street?
Currently, you're only given an exemption for one car. One car, one covered parking space is required, so that, that could be, that could result.
Right, because if we pull, it wasn't in here as an unintended consequence, but I think it's one that should be identified.
Yeah, I, I had not thought about that. Yeah, I had not thought about that.
Okay. Because if they're not incentivized, they might say, I'm not going to build this second spot, and therefore my car is going to be in the driveway or in the street, which would otherwise potentially be in a garage.
They would still be required to provide three onsite spaces.
Right.
But yes, that they could reduce a two-car garage down to a one to get the additional square footage for living space.
Right, okay.
And then park in the driveway tandem.
Just from a process point of view, I'm, I'm curious as to the comments that were received. Thank you for the comments. How were they, were they solicited or were they, were they sent in voluntarily? Because it looks like they were, may have been solicited, and I just want to check that out.
Staff sent, staff sent the proposed recommendations out to design professionals that, that were aware of, that work regularly in the city, just to keep them informed as to potential changes to design that were coming up.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to comment? Public hearing?
My name is Michael Hannah. I live at 821 McCorkle, and I'd like to add my voice to those who agree with the staff report that says that the, the porches should, should not be included in your FAR, I think, like Noah was saying, that that would create little boxes, especially on granny units and things where they are very limited. And I also wanted to point out that the medium density has, or medium density zoning has a lot coverage area of 45%, which also tends to not, you, you don't, 7,000 square foot lot, medium density, you can build a 2,380 square foot house. I think that's in the, in the, in the code there. And if you, but then you can do like your garage and your workshop and your 120 square foot shed or whatever. But all those things can't add up to greater than 45% of your lot coverage. So I think those two things help keep the density of the lot from becoming excessive, and that we already have good guidelines to limit, and with our setbacks, to limit things from getting out of control in medium density. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bennett?
I just wanted to add that when this decision was being considered, the idea of the porches and the, the idea, looking at the FAR was to deal with the massing that had been happening in town on the lots, and people were building out to FAR. And people were feeling that, we were feeling that, that might be inconsistent with the character of some of the neighborhoods that were, where the, you know, where there was more space. And so with, with the exemption of the porches, there was a consideration of privacy and a sense of massing. When the porches wouldn't be counted, they could get closer to the neighbors. And the neighbors had come in on, on some of these, some applicants' proposals to maximize the FAR because of the massing of the houses and the loss of privacy. So I just wanted to remind, and also the architects, even though there would be some square footage lost, to still accommodate porches, you'd have to cut down the square footage of the house in order to accommodate the porches. With this new idea, that was seen to be a positive thing, that the square footage of the houses, the FAR, you know, should be, you know, made smaller in deference to the feel of the neighborhood and the complaints that the neighbors were having at the time. The extra, the parking issue, I remember we had discussed what was going on in Piedmont and other areas where land for new building was going away, and second units were becoming more important. And to have this, what we decided, we felt would maximize the incentive to build second units, because there wouldn't be this requirement to have everything off, you know, have all of it off, off-street parking. So that was the thinking of that. So I'm just bringing that up. I'm not sure that, that came through in any of this, that what we were thinking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Donna Hines, Magnolia Avenue. And I think the elimination of the exemption for the porches would be a mistake, just simply because of the architectural issues that the unintended consequences that it'll recreate by making box-type houses, having people that are proposing houses, you know, that want to maximize their interior square footage, would, would put all their square footage in the interior, since that's the only square footage that would count. So I think that would be a mistake. I, I actually also think that the elimination of the garage exemption is, will have an intended consequences as well of having additional on-street parking. And I, I think that the, I have spent a lot of time looking at the FAR, and, and I think that in most cases, it works like it is right now. A couple of the cases that came up at planning commission that preceded this decision involved a little bit unique consequences, such as trying to divide one lot into two, that created the massing, that, that created the concerns that, that caused the elimination of these exemptions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? Okay, let me close the public comment, and let me begin with you, Mr. Doring. Under our rules, I'm supposed to alternate in terms of calling on folks. We do.
Technical question first?
Sure.
Porches can't be built into the setbacks, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
There, there are some allowances for staircases accessing porches, actually can encroach, but this porch themselves.
Cannot, okay, thank you.
Mr. Doring?
Well, I understand how we got to this point. I think people were frustrated that people were, applicants and developers were maxing out their FARs. And the, you know, these massing of houses occurred in a short period of time on certain streets in town. So it was clear that we were trying to grapple with that issue. I'm not exactly sure if this is the way to approach it or reducing the FARs in general. But the one thing I would add to the conversation here, though, is the argument against eliminating the exemptions presumes that we don't have a robust design review process. It basically says, hey, the architect submits a plan, we're going to, we don't get the balcony, so we're going to put all that into the interior. We're going to have these big box houses. But it doesn't, it doesn't take into account that we have a design review process that says, wait a minute, no, no, no. The city is the one who tells the applicant whether that is appropriate or not for the neighborhood. And we have a whole series of findings that we have to make in design review. Now, I don't, you know, some would say, well, maybe we haven't been aggressive enough in design review. Others would say, we've been too aggressive. That's not my argument here today. But I don't, I don't accept the argument that the unintended consequences, and I understand the unintended consequences. If you eliminate those, yeah, there would be an incentive to, to maximize your space. But I don't know if that is necessarily going to happen if we have design reviews that says, no, we don't, we want, we want a balcony. You got to put in a balcony. We'd like to see one, because every other place, you know, I mean, that's an aggressive, you know, simplification of the statement, but we'd like to see this home be more in keeping with the neighborhood. And by eliminating these things, you know, or putting this in, it would be in character with the neighborhood. You know, so that's just my, my point of view, that there is a sort of a fail-safe mechanism there to say, wait a minute, no, 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 you can't just build the big box.
Mr. White?
Well, I appreciate, you know, the planning commission's dilemma of trying to deal with massing with, and I would agree with you, on that maybe the design review system needs to be looked at and looked at comprehensively and, and find, you know, a better formula for addressing, especially the historic areas of town. And I'm against just taking out the exemptions. I'd rather see a more comprehensive approach to this. I think, and I agree with the staff, that if you just eliminate, you know, this, this exemption or, or, you know, another exemption, that, that there's going to be consequences that, that I think we can anticipate some, and others we can't anticipate. So I would be more in favor, I mean, even if it takes you months to get there, that, that we go down that road rather than, than take these exemptions out. Let's see, there was one other point I was going to make. I'll try and come back to it, but go ahead.
I'll get back to you. Ms. Kroll?
Well, I completely agree with the policy behind all this, which is to not allow lots to be overbuilt by, by monster homes. But I, I don't think that this is the way to accomplish it. I think unfortunately, it's a little bit idealistic. I don't know why, but it's a thing. People want to maximize their homes. And so I'm, I think that unintended, unintended consequences would be realized. And so I, I agree with Peter that a more comprehensive approach, when I was reading this, I was just thinking, why don't we just reduce, and I don't know if it's FAR or FAR, I asked one of the architects, do you call it FAR or FAR? And he said FAR, so that's why I called it that. But I said, why don't we just reduce that? And I guess it's a little bit more complicated than that. But it just seems that the other thing I would say, that some of the problems that have come up in the past few years is maybe the planning commission has been a little bit too lenient on granting variances. And that's caused some of the, I know that, I know in a couple instances, that has caused some problems. But into the setbacks. So I would not be in favor of the exemption for either the carports or for the porches and the balconies.
All right. Mr. Pitts?
Wait, no, I'm in favor of the exemption. Sorry.
Yeah, right. We understood you.
Okay, sorry.
We understood you. We're caught in a double negative.
Having been a former planning commissioner and been part of the design review process, I think it could be more robust. And I think that's another day's discussion. I think this is about massing, which FAR is a part of, but it's not just FAR. And, and look, this 200 square feet, at 10,000 square feet, it's like a 2% change in the FAR effectively. If you're at 5,000, it's like 4%. It's miniscule, whether we do this or not. And I think doing it is a Band-Aid to a bigger concern that needs to be addressed. There's a lot of ways to skin it. You could have different height limits based on different parts of your property in terms of how far you're set back from your neighbor, that address privacy, massing, et cetera. And just eliminating these to try to fix the problem is not a good solution. So I think we need to reject both of these proposed eliminations and, and really look at this in a more holistic manner. There's a, and more isn't always better. One of the highest prices per square foot ever sold, I forget which, which street it's on, but one of the agricultural streets south of our city limits, was designed by Thierry Despont, who's a French architect. And, and it's a very small 1,700 square foot house with a beautiful porch on it. It's not overly massive, and it got a higher price per square foot than anything I've seen sold in Napa Valley. And so more doesn't always mean more. There's an inclination to think, I got to maximize my square footage to get my highest price as a, as a developer. And we have a lot of developers in town trying to make money, which is great. But I think that design really matters, how things fit into a lot. Outdoor living is really important, too. So anyway, it's a side note, but I think it's important to the discussion of massing when we, when we get there.
All right. Did you think of your further thought?
I think enough has been said.
All right. I, my only, I basically agree with my colleagues. If it were just these two exemptions, I would certainly not vote to, I would vote to eliminate the exemption, I would vote not to eliminate the exemption for porches. I would consider the, eliminating the exemption for covered parking, but at 200 square feet, depending upon lot size, I must say. Mr. Pitts's argument that we're talking about the smallest of Band-Aids is, strikes me as right. It is part of a larger discussion. I think the focus should be on the medium density residential district, because that's where you say it is. And, and I, I think the discussion has to be broader than just FARs. It has to deal with lot coverage. It has to deal with, I thought that Mr. Pitts also had some thoughts in terms of, in terms of perhaps setbacks that go farther back, the higher up you go, so that you don't have houses overlooking other houses. That seems to be a concern. I don't know how other communities have done it. But to me, there's, there's, there's a lot here for the planning staff working with the planning commission to put their teeth into, to come up with a broader solution. So I don't know that it really requires a vote here. At this point, I think we have pretty much unanimous feeling on this at this point. Are you with us, Mr. Doring?
I am.
Yeah, all right.
I, I think there's a problem that we need to address. That's what I'm concerned about, and we can't just, you know, no offense to anybody here, but we cannot just kick this can down the road. If these, these projects keep coming forward, we're getting grief from the community who doesn't want the massing. So we have to address that issue.
Do you have enough direction to?
Yeah. I definitely have enough direction. I was just wondering if we needed a vote to deny the issue, but-
No. It, it's, it's equivalent of this dying for want of a, of a motion, a little on the second.
Oh, we want to agendize it sooner than-
I think so. I think that's a direction, right?
Yeah.
Put that on the list.
It takes months to do it right, as Peter said.
Okay. Next item, new business. Discussion and termination of tree committee membership of Scott Freeland due to moving outside of San Antonio city limits, I would add, with hope of moving back inside city limits within 18 months. Is there, is there any real discussion here? Are we all in agreement? He should be reappointed.
Mr. Mayor, not reappointed, just to remain on the committee.
Oh, I see. Not, not to remove it.
Not resigning.
Right. He just forced his resignation.
We decline to require his resignation respectfully.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, just for the sake of conversation, are there others that apply that, that live in the city who are waiting to be appointed at some point? Well, to me, that would be the only issue. If you had a list of people, probably not. But if there was a list of five people who lived in the city who actually met the qualifications-
I feel like we struggled to fill that.
Yes.
Isn't that the purpose? Isn't that the, sort of the policy reason why we would not want to dismiss this gentleman? Okay, as long as I understand that, thanks.
He's still seated, and he wants to continue to serve the community. He's hoping to come back real soon. And we do have other outside residents that serve on some of the other committees, so, thank you.
Okay. Next item, 15, consideration of proposed approval of resolution authorizing the police department to fund one police officer position effective May 1st, 2016, at a cost of not more than $19,568.50, and I would add, for the remainder of this fiscal year. Chief Emboden?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. What I want to talk to you tonight is the proposal I, I put up to fund a vacant position within the police department and not create a new position. July of 2016, the police department, sorry, 2015, the police department laid off the police chief and promoted me to the acting chief position as a cost-saving move, and left the lieutenant position vacant to, to realize those salary savings as well. That left the police department with a chief, three sergeants, and seven officers, which created an immediate hurdle to have to cover the shifts that we have anytime there's a vacancy. Whether somebody's going to training, or on a vacation, or sick, or whatever the case may be, anytime somebody's gone, we have to cover that position with an officer on overtime to meet our minimum staffing requirements of two officers on at all times for, for safety reasons. In July of 2016, I have two anticipated FMLA leave coming that could last as much as 12 weeks apiece. And the cost of just covering those two leaves with overtime would be approximately $49,000. That doesn't take into account the vacations that are already signed up for, for July, August, September. I've got five officers taking up to seven weeks of vacation throughout the course of the summer, not including the two officers that may be taking their FMLA leave. And so to, to cover the, the overtime with all of those positions- Uh, and so to, to cover the, the overtime with all of those positions would be a tremendous strain on the department, on the staff that, that aren't absent, the wear and tear and, and the strain. And it, and it potentially could result in canceling vacations for, for officers that have already signed up. So in July, I would like to fill the lieutenant position that was, that I vacated. It was intended to be filled in July all along, assuming uh, things were okay. And um, and so I would like to fill that position with one of the sergeants from the current ranks of sergeants. And rather than promoting another officer to sergeant, uh, hire another officer. And that would give us uh, a chief lieutenant, two sergeants and eight officers. It doesn't change our staffing. We're still capped at twelve bodies, which is what we had on June thirtieth of last year and, and what I anticipated having on July first of this year regardless. What I'm asking for is, is two months early. In order for us to have an officer trained and uh, working solo so that they can cover some of these shifts, I need to have him hired no later than May first. That'll give us two months to train them and get them out on their own. And then they can take one of the uh, one of the absences caused by the FMLA leave. And they can take any uh, overtime shifts going further when, when an officer is absent for one of the many other reasons that, that they sometimes are gone. The other thing it allows me to do is I can shuffle the personnel that we have to cover the, the second FMLA, FMLA leave and potentially eliminate that overtime completely. And yet still have enough bodies to cover any unexpected or expected absences going forward. Like I said, I'm asking for the position a couple of months early. Um, I thought I would, uh, earlier than I thought I would need to, but it, but it isn't an additional person. I'm still capped at twelve, counting myself. There is some cost savings involved here, besides the less overtime hopefully uh, needed to cover the shifts. Promoting uh, or hiring an officer instead of promoting an officer to sergeant would reduce the salary from a sergeant's position to an officer's position. And it would also bring in another officer. That officer would most likely be, would fall under the pepper requirements for PERS. So there'd be a lower cost for their retirement um, package going forward. I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Any initial questions from council?
I, I have a question. So um, we're gonna have to pay the forty-nine thousand in overtime costs to cover the FMLA leave absences, but how much are we gonna save? Like, we don't pay for FMLA leave absences, do we?
Well, they, the, the officers use their um, sick leave and/or vacation leave to cover that absence, but I still have to fill the, the shifts. And so we would pay another officer to work that shift and they, they would get that at an overtime rate.
So they're gonna use all of their time to pay? In other words, there's not gonna be like two weeks where we aren't paying to, to offset some of the overtime? There's not like two weeks for one of those individuals where they're not getting paid at all? Everybody's gonna be able to juggle it so that they get paid?
Well, yes, everybody gets paid. If they have the um, the time on the books, they, they get paid for their FMLA leave. If they don't have, they can take it unpaid. Uh, but both of the officers that I'm anticipating leaving are fairly senior and have quite a bit of sick leave and vacation.
All right, any further questions of Chief Imboden?
My understanding is that you have right now three sergeant positions and that one of those would be eliminated to make room for the additional officer?
Correct.
Would that be the plan from here going forward? Or in a year from now, would you want to replace that sergeant position? What, what's the thinking there?
It would be, right now, the plan would be going forward. Ideally, uh, in a perfect world, we would have more personnel and, and I would like to have more sergeants to, to supervise, but it's not feasible right now. And, and functionally, it works better if we have eight officers and two sergeants.
I know that Calistoga had, had a similar problem, frankly, a worse problem. I think they had, at one point, they were four officers down.
They still are.
Uh, and they're, and what they did, they just entered into, I think, an agreement in June for a one-year contract with the county to have a deputy sheriff there, serving that role as an officer on contract. Uh, did you consider comparing the numbers there to see if that would save us money compared to what you've laid out here in the staff report?
I did not. Uh, I just, from what I know of the, of the contract and what Calistoga's going through, they're paying the deputies at a deputy's rate, uh, which is more than what our officers get paid. Additionally, their, their deputies um, only work the day shift. They, they have an assigned shift. Uh, and so the, the remaining Calistoga officers and the chief are having to juggle working graveyards on the, on patrol. But it, as far as cost goes, without having hard numbers in front of me, I know that a deputy would make more than an officer in St. Helena.
Yeah, and I understand that. I think from what I saw in their staff report, they, they are um, paying fourteen thousand, two hundred and thirty bucks a month for the deputy uh, per month, so. But they're not paying the overtime, so I guess that leads into my question here. Here, you're, you're, you've laid out the numbers of what it would cost between eight thousand, four hundred to nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four. I see that depending on where they are in the step. But you're still, you're only eliminating half of the overtime, right? So this forty-nine thousand dollars won't be fully um, reduced. You'll still have twenty-four thousand of that or twelve thousand a month, correct?
Well, there's a potential for that, but.
Potential for that.
But what I would be able to do with another body is uh, have one of the sergeants shift to that officer's position and cover that FMLA leave while they're gone. Uh, and that would eliminate the overtime completely. That would still leave me one body to cover other absences that are planned, that is, like the vacations.
Okay.
So does that mean that, well, for one, two questions. In oh sixteen, oh seventeen, we were budgeting an additional officer being hired?
When we did the budget reductions for fifteen sixteen, we were looking for one-time reductions just to balance the fifteen sixteen budget because it, it was a surprise to us that, that costs had increased so much. And so, as we talked about during the fifteen sixteen um, budget process, a lot of the cost savings were one-time and this was one of them. It was, it was never guaranteed. We said, just to get through to balance fifteen sixteen, we were gonna lay off the police chief and then promote Bill into the acting and leave that vacant for the, for the twelve months and see where we were for sixteen seventeen. We knew it would be a difficult year. We knew there'd be overtime. We knew that it would be, that we would really task the officers because it's not enough because of always having two on for every shift. And so the idea was, that was part of the teamwork of getting through this year's budget. So there was no guarantee, but it was understood that it would be, at least from my perspective, not from the council's perspective, at the top of the, the list for priorities to refund in sixteen seventeen.
Okay, so, so that, that said, just let me finish one, one thing. So if the, if the savings of the overtime is forty-nine and we're adding one thirty-one, does that mean the net increase is really eighty roughly? Cause we're eliminating that overtime expense of forty-nine, right?
Potentially eliminated, I don't think.
Maybe not all of it, but potentially.
So, so what we're trying to do is be proactive. Bill recognizes, you know, obviously we didn't expect FMLA from two of our officers, but you always have to anticipate that individuals can be out. And so Bill's just trying to be proactive. We're, we're trying to do our best guess. If someone gets injured, hopefully not, then, then this calculation's out the window because now you have another vacancy. If, if someone else needs to go out on family medical leave. So what we're trying to do is in the best case scenario, just say, we know that, that two officers being out, this is what it would cost to cover those two officers in overtime. And so we're really giving you some rougher estimates to the best of our ability.
Okay, thank you.
I guess my question, I guess it's to Jennifer. So, we did this cut for fifteen sixteen knowing that, or, or with the idea that it was gonna be a temporary, but we're actually not, we're not fulfilling it because we need nineteen thousand dollars more. We need nineteen thousand dollars this, this budget year. Can we afford that?
Well, you need either forty-nine. You don't have a choice.
Well, that's the next year, right?
No, the forty-nine is for this year. Well, no, it's for, no, no, sorry, next year.
Next year.
Forty-nine would be sixteen seventeen, right?
Correct.
Sorry, yes.
I'm just wondering, can we, it seems like we were so tight in that we cut this positions to, can we, can we afford it?
It, it's tight. Um, revenues are up a little bit. Um, it would come from assigned general fund reserves, which we, which we've been tapping into. But the idea is to, to um, you know, it, the fiscal year is only a pla- it's, it's a moment in time. So whether you spend the money in May or you spend it in July.
It's okay. I'm just worried, I just, we made the cut to, to balance budgets this year, but now we're asking for twenty thousand dollars into that, just.
So one of the things is I've, I've held two positions vacant, um, a position in the library and a position in Public Works that were vacated through um, a promotion, actually someone leaving and then a promotion and a retirement in the library. And, and I'm holding both of those. I'm not filling those at this time. So it's allowing us some, some, some cushion for things like this. So basically, the answer is yes. It's, fifteen sixteen is very tight and, and the finance director will be bringing your mid-year budget adjustment. You know, one of the challenges that the chief and I talked about was bringing a request to you like this before you see the sixteen seventeen budget. It's very challenging. And, and it kinda gets out in front of everybody else and you don't really know what the needs are gonna be for sixteen seventeen. Um, but we feel that staffing your police department is appropriate and, and this is, will be a top need for the sixteen seventeen request. And so being proactive, we're bringing it to you now, but we understand it's a little frustrating sort of being out there in front of all the other requests that will happen.
So what are the negative impacts of waiting to see the budget?
Um, you'll, you won't, he won't be able to hire an officer. Sorry, you wanna answer it?
I just, I wouldn't be able to hire somebody in time. That, the reason I'm bringing it today is because if I start today, I can hopefully have somebody hired by May first. It's a long hiring process that's very, you know, time intensive. And so um, if I, if I, the longer I wait, the longer into May we are in hiring and then we're into late July, early August or further to have them on their own. And, and then we've already bitten into the FMLA leave. Got it.
Right, that's, that's what's pushing it, yeah. Okay, uh, any further questions of staff? Okay, thank you very much.
I, I guess the, the thing that comes to mind, I mean, we're talking dollars, but I think, and that's important to talk about. Uh, what about just the, the quality of service and, you know, what's the downside? We're, we're in a way kind of rushing, maybe not rushing, but we're gonna get a brand-new officer with very little experience, right? As opposed to potentially, uh, well, maybe not. You're right, okay. The, the officer you just hired was, seemed to be experienced, so maybe I'm mistaken there. I, I guess I have a reservation without looking at, at, at other alternatives. I, I know there's a little bit of urgency to get the person going. Um, there's a part of me that would love to see a comparison between what we have on the table here and what the, the Napa County sheriffs could provide, so, I don't know. It would two weeks, I don't know, but my counsel would wait two weeks to get that information. Would that be a real wrinkle in this? If it is, then I'll, I'll bow, you know, to your, your discretion.
Every day we wait is a day further out that, that I have to push out hiring somebody. I mean, the, the hiring process can go fairly quickly, but typically it's three months, sometimes it's as much as four. The May first window is actually me anticipating a, a fairly streamlined hiring process. Some of that's out of our control, the, the medical and the psychological and polygraph tests that they have to go through. We're using outside people and we have to fit into their schedule and so sometimes it can be quite lengthy. And at this point, I don't, I have one applicant that applied a year ago. And that's the only application I currently have, so I'd have to actually start a process.
About all I can say is I, I know that somewhere in my mind, we received uh, a comparison of officer salaries from the various jurisdictions and I certainly recall consistently with what the chief just said, that the sheriff's department had uh, by far, as I recall, at the, the highest uh, uh, general rate for its offices.
So I can tell you what the rate is. It's fourteen thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars a month.
Yeah.
But my point is that they're saving, in Calistoga, they're, they're saving on overtime. That's the benefit there.
Yeah.
Is um, do we have a higher number of incidents and police calls in the summer months?
Oh yes, we're way busier in the summer.
Much busier. I mean, that would be a compelling reason to get ahead of the curve from a safety perspective, putting that in front of dollars and cents, is that if we delay, then we're into the middle of the summer, we're understaffed and it might have impacts.
Okay. Any further questions of staff? All right, thank you, chief. Uh, any further council discussion? Oh, excuse me, uh, public comment? Yes.
Um, I'm Bobby Monette. I'm speaking as a citizen. I wasn't planning to talk, but I, this is my fortieth year living here. And the very best thing about this town is the sense of safety in the police department. And the police department isn't only making the place safe, but they do so in such a respectful and friendly and real way that my sense is, whatever they ask for, you know, it's extremely important to, to support them. And furthermore, I think we also, the quality of, of work conditions when people are working overtime, which they are having to do if they're not appropriately staffed, that can really undermine the um, the efficiency and the effectiveness of the officers who are all having to do that. So I, I really think this proactive approach is probably good from very many perspectives, so I certainly support this.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment? All right, I'll, I'll close uh, public comment. Any further uh, council discussion? I would simply say for myself that I believe the chief has made a compelling case uh, for this and I favor it, uh, strongly favor it.
So I would move to approve and adopt the resolution for approving the hiring of one police officer beginning no sooner than May first.
I second it.
Ms. Black?
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. That takes us to item sixteen. Uh, consider approval of recommendation to contract with a forensic accountant, direct staff to return with an agreement for council approval and receive and file report on analysis of the comprehensive flood control project. And the lead staff consists of two, uh, Ms. Mits and uh, Ms. Prokofsky.
I'm actually gonna present for you this evening.
Oh, all right.
But I take um, very little credit for the writing of this staff report and would like to thank Ms. Prokofsky for um, what I would say is a tremendous effort over the last six months in um, going through the documentation, trying to piecemeal this whole project together and writing an exceptional staff report to be able, for me to be able to present this item to you this evening. So thank you very much. Tracy's here to answer technical questions you may have. Um, I'm gonna just kinda go over the, the fundamentals and the staff report and then we're here to answer questions. And Ms. Mits is here as well, if you have some questions. Um, all right, so, the purpose of tonight's staff report, or the purpose of the tonight's staff report is to talk about the comprehensive flood control project. This was certainly a gigantic project, a thirty-five million dollar project for a city of our size to take on. It is quite an undertaking. And so um, it was one of the first things I learned about and, and tried to get my arms around and try to understand what happened. And so one of the things we wanna do is sort of walk you through the history of the project and then the steps of what happened over the, the last decade or so and obviously the recommendations of the report. Overall, the purpose of um, this project, and we call it the comprehensive flood control project, was to reduce the likelihood of severe flooding for areas around, along the Napa River at Solfer Creek. Um, and the ultimate end goal was to receive a letter of map revision from FEMA. And, and thankfully, and we'll try to point out some good things that happened with that project, that did happen. And the city did receive its letter of map revision on November fifth, two thousand and twelve. So after the floods, the first, um, when the city decided that it wanted to initiate this project, one of the first things it did was receive a FEMA hazard mitigation grant. And that was specifically for, to fund a planning study. And, and this is one of the things that I learned through this project. The comprehensive flood control project actually consists of multiple projects. And most of us think about it as the flood control project behind Vineyard Valley, when in fact it had multiple projects. Although the Vineyard Valley project certainly was the largest of them. It also consisted of Fulton and Mitchell storm drains, the Mitchell Duck Pond cleaning and repair, clearing and repair, Meadow Creek bank stabilization, the Deer Park Road Study and the Benefit Assessment District Project. Um, to our knowledge and the best of our research, all of these projects have been completed, so that's also good news. So back on April tenth, two thousand and fifteen, um, the city council received a public staff report regarding the reimbursement or de-obligation of one point nine million dollars to the Office of Emergency Services for a FEMA grant. The return of this money was discovered through our annual audit process. And again, it was discussed publicly during the presentation of the CAFR in February by the Director Mits and again, a staff report on April twenty, uh, April two thousand and fifteen by Ms. Mits to discuss what happened to the best of our ability, how, how it came about that we received the monies and how it came about that we had to, those funds were de-obligated and a check was issued back to Office of Emergency. check was issued back to Office of Emergency Services. As a result of that, this current city administration really felt that we didn't understand the revenues and expenses related to this gigantic project or projects. And we know that audits can still happen on some of our revenue sources and so we felt as your current management team that it was critical that we understood this project to the best of our ability. And so what we, for us, it prompted a need to review all the revenues and expenses. To do that, we hired a grants manager, that occurred in May and we were fortunate enough to have Ms. Prokosky join us and she's been nothing but exceeded our expectations as we've gone through this project. I had very high hopes and she blew them out of the water for us. This review began in two thousand and fifteen, June two thousand and fifteen. I would say the first three months, Tracy spent fifty-fifty, she's so smart and talented, we kept throwing other stuff at her during the budget process and some other things that we needed her to look at because we are so short-staffed and so we kept pulling her away from this project. About the September-October timeframe, we realized we really needed to leave her alone and let her finish this and about eighty to eighty-five percent of her time from October on was really spent finalizing the report that you have in front of you. So that's why it's taken a little bit of time, but again, it's just been a huge effort. As part of her review of all of this, I would say we, she probably went through three to five hundred boxes of records, records that were found all over City Hall at the Corp Yard. We had to contact granting agencies to get records we didn't have and so it certainly, just in finding the documentation was a major project. The funding sources for this project, so thirty-seven point six million in revenue sources, we had several, we had a Department of Water Resources grant, which I have to say was a bit of a surprise to us because it had never really been discussed in other documentation we'd found. I had the Hazard Mitigation Grant, which I just mentioned, a little over three million dollars, that's minus the one point nine million, so already removed from that, from that total amount. A state revolving loan fund of eight million, Measure A, which is the sales tax passed here in Napa County for flood control projects, of eighteen million to date, we still have about four point five billion that we're expecting to receive from that. And the General Fund also contributed to this project. So that's the sources of revenue. The project expenses fell in multiple categories and I won't go through them, but you can see them detailed here, gives you a sense of sort of where the monies went. So again, the records management and accounting was a bit of a challenge for us, we did lack project files. Again, this is, this is a massive project for a small city to undertake, but one would have hoped that we could have found some project files that were at least relatively complete, that was challenging. We had a massive search for documents, again, we had to ask assistance from our, some of our funding agencies. And so we're very grateful that they were able to provide documentation that they had that we didn't. Another challenge was the funds for all the flood control proj, for the comprehensive flood control projects, we had multiple sources of funds. When you go back and look at this slide and you see those different revenue sources, unfortunately, in two thousand and eight, the decision was made to commingle all of those revenue sources into one fund. And the reason you have fund accounting and government is it helps you keep track of those different revenue sources, that's why we talk about funds and the color of money in government. And that unfortunately was combined in two thousand and eight and so the ability then to track those revenues and those related expenses became very difficult. And in fact, some of the revenue sources specifically requested or required that those funds remained separate so they could be properly tracked and they weren't, they were commingled. Some of the documentation also, there was a lack of backup or documentation related to requests that we made and so maybe there was a drawdown done, but even that documentation was inadequate and so we found really the whole process to be quite challenging. So then what Tracy did is began the analysis, so starting with the Hazard Mitigation Grant, this is the grant where we had to return the one point nine million. Again, these were FEMA funds and they were specifically for planning, for a planning study to develop options, cost estimates and preliminary designs to reduce potential flooding, this was six million, a little over six million dollars. These grant funds are very specific and have very specific guidelines to them, there's basically contractual obligations when you accept these monies. What happened with the one point nine and de-obligated funds was some of the funds were used for construction and loan payments, some were for administrative expenses, lobbying or endowment domain-related expenses and some were outside the permitted project period. And so we have confirmed to the best of our ability that all of those costs were ineligible and the de-obligation was appropriate and the city will not be receiving any of the one point nine million back. And that was one of the, one of the things that we had told the community and the council that we would go through the due diligence to determine if there was any way to get some part, all of this one point nine and that is, that matter in our minds now is not possible, sadly. The next analysis was on the state revolving loan fund, so this is a loan from the State Water Board, we borrowed eight million dollars for construction and land acquisition only. Again, very specific, and what was interesting about this loan is, it's not a loan that we're used to where you go to borrow money and then you get the whole bulk of money and you spend it as you need it. This was actually a loan done on reimbursement, so the only time we received money is when we actually spent it. So we had to submit to the state certain expenses that were supposed to fall under the construction and land acquisition and when we made those expenses, we would submit them and then we would be reimbursed by the state. The payments are being made on time, again, I promised to point out good news, so that's good news, we're on schedule and in compliance with our payments. Payments will continue on this loan through two thousand and twenty-eight, so we have quite a while to pay that down. We do have contractual issues with that loan, again, there was no separate fund created, it was all put into that two thirty-five fund, there's no specific project file on this. We were supposed to establish a capital reserve fund, we have not done that. We're also not in compliance with the initial take permit and they're holding a letter of credit of a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars that quite frankly, because we're out of compliance, the state could invoke at any time and basically request a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars or a little bit less in that arena immediately from the city because we are not in compliance with this loan agreement. And so that's certainly concerning for us and one of the things that we're working with, with the state. And as we went through this process, I think one of the things that we've done extremely well, and I'm really proud of this team, is we're working really well with our funding partners. And so we've reached out to each of these revenue sources, these funding sources and said, we're struggling with this, we can't find this, this is what we think we're finding, are you finding that too, are you reading this the same way? And if they're saying yes, we see that you're out of compliance, quite frankly, the state said, wow, we're so delighted to hear from somebody from St. Helena, we've been writing letters, we've been telling you, we sort of gave up. And so yay, there's someone there again and Tracy's built a great relationship with these agencies, they're delighted to have us back in contact with them and would really like us to get back in compliance. And so part of the proactiveness of what we're doing is we avoid an audit later, we avoid a negative audit later, most likely we'll get audited on most of these revenue sources and when it's found by them, the consequences are much, potentially much more severe and strict and immediate versus us coming forward and saying, can you help us through this, can we come up with solutions together? The proactive approach is much, much better and puts the city in a much better position to work its way collaboratively through these things. So we've already initiated those conversations with the state, developing a really good working relationship with them and they've been just wonderful to work with and problem-solving is so we can get through this and get into compliance with this loan. The next item or the next area revenue source that was reviewed or analyzed was the Department of Water Resources grant. Again, this was a little bit of a surprise to us because it hadn't really been a part of the conversation and the main paperwork that we'd been looking at over the last period of time. And so we were awarded three point one million, however, we received two point four because that's where the construction estimates came in and so we've drawn down two point one million of that grant. We also have contractual issues with this grant as well. We were, we are required to create a conservation easement, which we have not done. The contract is expired and we're out of compliance on an expired contract. They're holding two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in a retention so that we will create, for the city to create, the conservation easement and so that's being held until we do that. There was a lack of documentation and a project file on this grant in particular and we do have concerns about the reimbursements related to this grant. Again, building a great relationship with the Department of Water Resources, they want to see us be successful when they grant these kinds of monies, the intent is that the granting agency is successful and so their goal is to help us through the challenges that we've identified. So the Department of Water Resources and the state revolving loan fund are sort of intertwined. Both are based on specific expenditures, one for construction, one for construction and land acquisition. The Department of Water Resources grant does not currently permit the use of the state revolving fund, is not currently permissible for payments to the state revolving loan fund. It doesn't mean that it couldn't be, it means that the way the contract's currently written, it's not. Staff has identified approximately two million dollars in charges that were charged both to the state revolving fund and the Department of Water Resources. That's really worrisome. That means that basically we've found the same expenses, submitted them to one, drew down, used those same expenses, submitted them to another agency and drew down money on the same expenses. Again, we've proactively contacted these agencies and we're working together to identify solutions. What it basically comes down to is that money's been spent, because the funds have been commingled, it's very difficult and extremely time-consuming for us to figure out how those monies were spent, but the bottom line is, the General Fund will have to repay over two million dollars to one of these agencies. And that's, at this point, quite catastrophic, quite frankly, for the General Fund as we only have about two point one, two point two million dollars in the General Fund assigned reserve. And so that's why we certainly want to be collaborative with these agencies and come up with solutions that the city can afford and hopefully something that we can pay back over a period of time because it would be extremely difficult for us to come up with that money immediately. And so this proactive collaborative approach is hopefully going to help us through this problem that we're having. For Measure A, that analysis is continuing, we've drawn down eighteen million dollars, that's from the sales tax revenues, the analysis is still in progress. The prior drawdowns that were done, the controller who's responsible for that has asked us for more detailed documentation. Some documentation was submitted, but in her position, it's inadequate and so we've been asked to provide more detailed documentation. That's important too, because we also don't want to submit monies to Measure A that we submitted to one of the others. And so it's critically important that we also analyze all of the eighteen million dollars in expenditures for Measure A. The estimate now from the controller is approximately four point five million that the city should receive from the sales tax through two thousand and eighteen. Those monies must be used for the state revolving loan fund payments. That's how the loan was written, those monies were basically obligated to pay that back and that's the revenue source that we need to use to be able to do that. And so those monies cannot be used to pay off the obligation that we have, the approximately two point nine million, two million for the Department of Water Resources and state revolving fund. It can't be used for that and it really needs to be used for paying down the loan. So all of that's a bit distressing, to be quite honest. It's important that we find it, which we've done. What we've found basically is we've had contractual compliance issues with the state revolving fund and Department of Water Resources and so we need to negotiate with them, we need to complete the Measure A process, the analysis for that, provide that additional backup for the prior drawdowns. We do need to do at least one contract amendment, if not more, as we go through and finish up the Measure A drawdowns. We do have to establish the conservation easement if we choose to continue to move forward with the Department of Water Resources, that conservation easement is not an option, it must be done, must be done with a neutral third party and so work needs to be done on that. We need to close that grant out, we need to complete our incidental take permit, which is for California shrimp, endangered shrimp, freshwater, I think it is, yes, endangered freshwater California shrimp, want to take care of our shrimp. And so we need to do a deed restriction for that and correct some deficiencies and we also need to establish a capital reserve fund related to that. So there's still quite a bit of work, as much work as we've put into this already, just figuring out where we are today, there's still more work that needs to be done in the months ahead just to get into compliance and that doesn't include, well, the negotiations are basically about what to do about the two million dollars and how we pay that back. So next steps and conclusion, we need to develop, adopt and implement a grants management policy, I think that's fairly obvious, it was one of the things that's on the to-do list for the grants manager. So we'll certainly be bringing that to council for your review and approval. Staff's fiscal review has revealed apparent weaknesses in grant accounting and contractual compliance and as a result, it's my recommendation that we contract with a forensic accountant to do a more detailed review of all of this information and this again, is basically to be proactive because really what I worry about is not only this project and these grants, but our ability to be an effective grantee in the future. We hired a grants manager, there's many projects that we are interested in, we have grants in right now for Upper York Creek, a critical project and we want to be seen as a competent, reliable grantee and so to be able to work through these issues and make sure that there's nothing else that's found as we continue to move through this, I believe that at this point to hire a forensic accountant is appropriate and that's what I'm recommending to council, is that you authorize me to move forward with that and return to you with an agreement with a forensic accountant, that individual's work would then be presented to the council in a final report. And so Tracy and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
With respect to that last comment, the forensic accountant, presumably the agreement that you bring back to us would define a scope of work and would have a cost number associated with it.
That's correct, so I would issue an RFP, if you give me approval tonight, I would issue an RFP, solicit proposals for this work and then we would do a review as we have for other, like the fees and the rate studies and bring a recommendation to you that would include exactly that, the firm, their experience, a scope of work and a cost.
Fair to assume we can't use Measure A funds to fund that?
[laughing]
In all seriousness, I do have two quick questions. One, with the letter of credit that's being held, do we have cash posted somewhere backing that or is it our guarantee that's backing it?
It's, I believe it's our guarantee.
That's correct, it's our guarantee, however, we have given them approval and to be quite honest, a bank routing number so that if they decide to get very, very tough with us, we could have very little notice and they could take approximately a hundred and fifty thousand of that one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars fairly quickly.
Okay.
Right now, they're working-
The bank issued that LC, but they didn't back it, they've just linked it to our account? Okay. And the second question, just to get a sense of the timing of when these dollars were spent, you know, I know it started back in two thousand and eight when we created the commingled funds and the FEMA monies were spent early on, but the SRF and the Department of Water Resources grant, you know, what years was that happening, just for the public's knowledge and when were those dollars being spent? Obviously, we're finding all this now.
So the project spanned a number of years, it actually began in nineteen ninety-nine and then was concluded, as we saw at the beginning of this presentation, in two thousand and twelve. The Department of Water Resources money was approximately two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. The state revolving loan fund spanned a much larger period of time because it also included land acquisition. That was approximately two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine to about two thousand and eleven.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I know, back in April, we discussed policy changes that we would implement at some point to make sure that we don't repeat these issues going forward. I'm not sure what, which ones of those have been implemented or is there, what's the next step there?
And that is something that Tracy has continued to work on, we don't, we have not adopted any formal policies yet because this project has been so, so large, it's been taking up her time, so that's one of the next steps. And part of the conclusions and our next steps is actually getting that process, the policy solidified and taken to council.
Okay. One of the things that struck me when I came onto the council, which was a little unusual, was that I've never seen a list of warrants, not once since I've been here and from my prior experience in other bodies, we always, I'm not sure every, you know, month, but maybe quarterly, we'd get lists of warrants for larger items, like over fifty thousand or whatever and then, you know, there were smaller items, it was kind of- It was kind of, for me, comforting to be able to look at it and question it when things looked a little weird, and always got a good response. Not here, from my prior experience in Calistoga, but that would give me more comfort if that would come forward. And I know we talked about, I believe maybe we talked about that kind of a policy?
Yes.
That was one of the list of policy recommendations.
Does that, does that need formal change, or can we just start that now?
We actually started that when we had our first quarter update.
Okay.
So the update, I believe, it was October, I believe it was late October, it was our first quarterly update, so that included all checks over $100,000 for our mid-year budget review. Since that falls in line with the second quarter, I've included that as the bottom section of our mid-year budget review. So every quarter, any checks over $100,000 are presented to you for the, who they're to, the check number, the dollar amount.
All right.
And we did have, during the flood project construction, we had a policy in place that anything over $20,000 or over came to council.
Okay. This issue of the commingling, the 235 fund, I think you said that that began in 2008? I'm curious, just from the staff's perspective, of why that issue did not, or I'm presuming it did not come up in the audit process, 2009, 2010, 2011, going forward. Why, if you know, why that, that particular county wouldn't have shown some red flags, like, what is going on here? And maybe that's a bigger question you want to tackle right now, but to me, it's kind of interesting.
Yeah, and that's something that we definitely can't answer, since none of us were here at that time, why they were commingled. The initial funds, we had our old financial system, which was Fund 34 and then Fund 35. Fund 34 was the FEMA money, and then Fund 35 is specifically for Measure A. And then at some point, we just have the backup documentation, so we can see where they were commingled. We don't know why they were commingled, and we can't, we can't explain why our auditor wouldn't have.
Okay.
I don't know if that's something that they're normally pick up, but that's something also, we were hoping the forensic accountant could help us out.
Well, that's the reason I asked the question. You've led right into where I'm going with this. You know, the auditor didn't pick it up, that we have to make sure that the person that we hire as a forensic accountant has public accounting experience, public government contract accounting experience. There are a lot of people who are familiar with the private sector. There are very few, I think you'll find, who are forensic accountants that do work involving government, because it's a complete, I'm telling you, you already know, it's a completely different animal when it comes to these government operations, and so we, we have to make sure that we have someone who's qualified, otherwise we're going to be wasting our money if we get someone who just has private sector experience.
Just as a reminder, one of the first things, pretty close to one of the first things we did, is we recommended that after an extended period of time, that we get a new auditor. And so we have a new firm auditing our 14, 15 books, and so we think, we thought that was an important step.
Even with the warrants, which are, you know, need to happen and have been happening, you wouldn't necessarily detect the fact that the same things have been booked, or two different funds, right? Because the warrants weren't written twice, right? It's not like things were paid twice, but the same funds were earmarked for that one payment, right?
If I could interject for a moment, and that's actually one of the reasons for the separate fund accounting, is if, at the time that these warrants were written, we're using the separate fund accounting, each would have been assigned a separate account number in its separate fund, and that would have been the key to say, oh, check number 1234 was charged to the DWR fund, and check number 1234 was also charged to the SRF, and you would have seen that immediately when our accounts payable clerk was, was cutting the check. And so that's actually one of the primary reasons for using separate fund accounting.
And I assume we have a software system that's capable of catching that if it occurs? With separate fund accounting, without the separate fund accounting?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's more of a human entry type of thing. We can, I mean, I can look at our current software system. Our software system doesn't have the ability to do the separate fund accounting, because we do it for several, several of our other accounts. I would have to see if there's any, maybe custom reports that we could build that potentially would catch something like that. I don't know if that answers at least a portion of the question. I would have to check if it's, if we could set up something that would flag it in the system.
Right. It'd be good to have, as we talk about ways to avoid these type of errors in the future.
Can you just explain, what is this conservation easement? Clearly, we have to give an easement in favor of someone, but what, what are we conserving?
So it's actually the area known as Terrace B within the flood control project. So that was purchased with Measure A funds, and we're required to keep it as a, as an open area that offers riparian flood control. And the purpose of the third party is to make sure that, for whatever reason in the future, the city didn't decide to sell the land and perhaps try and develop it, or, or do some other, do some other purpose.
And then, if I may, one other question, just so I understand it a little bit better. This goes back to Measure A, where we still have quite a bit of money that hopefully should be coming to us. But what I'm understanding is that we're in a position where the Measure A folks can and will audit us, that they released money to us on the basis of our requests, on a draw basis, that we provided some documentation at that time, but in going back, they're now saying that the documentation that we provided was not sufficiently detailed, and they want detailed documentation going back, what, to the beginning of Measure A at this point? And then we have to be sure that what we're supporting from Measure A funds is not something that we also receive from another grant source. Have I roughly got this right?
That's correct. The only thing I would add is that there was a sense from the controller that our documentation, she was lenient with our documentation to assist us to be able to do those drawdowns. And so my understanding is she's always asked for it, but was lenient in the drawdowns, and is now saying, okay, I was lenient before, but I'm ready now. Please, please submit the additional documentation I've been asking for, for 10 years, or whatever the period of time has been.
And, and so it's also my understanding that of the, some of this 1.9 million that we cannot, we've determined we can't get back, so 146,000 of that was relocation expenses that we provided to 10, 10 senior citizens who had mobile homes, and that is not chargeable to Measure A, and $200,000 of it was demolition of the Vineyard Valley Mobile Home Park, and that is not chargeable to something else. In other words, we can't, there's nothing else that we can charge these two.
Right, and that's the challenge. So what ends up happening is, what Tracy's doing now is she's basically identifying, finding all the costs associated with this project, and in the staff reported states, we think we're about 99% of the way there. There's about, about $300,000 worth of expenses that we haven't been able to identify yet, so about 1% of the cost. Oh, I lost my train of thought. What was the question?
Oh, I just was saying, so this is the 1.9 million, some of these expenses, we, there's no way-
Right.
-to find another funding source for some of these expenses.
So what you have to do is you have to look at each of the revenue sources and say, what's eligible under each of those? And the general fund then becomes the last, sort of, all of those odd costs that didn't fall, didn't, weren't eligible for DWR or Measure A. That's where, so that's what she's doing now, is saying, okay, here, here's a cost, doesn't apply here, doesn't apply here, okay, that's going to have to go into Measure A, or General Fund. Oh, the General Fund covered this. Oh, but that could be billed to Measure A. And so that's what she's working on. So, so we're doing the best we can, but it's the General Fund, that's the last catch-all of costs that can't be applied to any of the other revenue sources.
But that's only after we plead and beg-
Yes.
-to find a way to fit them into the revenue source.
Yes. Oh, absolutely.
So with the Measure A being 18 million total-
To date.
The state revolving fund was 8 million total, but yet we can only use, maybe it's just the remaining dollars from Measure A to repay the state revolving fund?
Correct.
Did we use, but we were allowed previously to use Measure A funds for other stuff?
Right.
So couldn't we go back and talk about using, I guess we need it all-
We need it all.
-to pay back this SRF anyway?
That's the problem.
Right?
Yep. We need it all.
Okay. Are there other sources out there that we haven't already tapped that we could look to for these relocation expenses and things of that nature? Is there a USDA? I mean, is there something that we have, I'm sure we've been looking, or if we haven't, could we look?
The challenges-
Before it goes to the General Fund, right?
Right. The challenge is, is that if you're going to look for grants, this is all done. The project's closed, it's done, it's finished. And so granting agencies are interested in making things happen, not recovering costs of a project that wasn't properly managed. And so that's, that's the challenge. It's, you know, it was closed in 2012, basically. I mean, this is, it's, it's, it's not of interest to granting agencies.
And it's, the, the, at one point there was, we were pursuing reimbursement from the Army Corps of Engineers. That is not on the table.
We were pursuing, we were pursuing a WERDA grant, Water-
Water Resources Development Act.
From, from the federal government, and that was in the $18 million range.
Right.
The, the deal was that the Army Corps of Engineers had to certify the project, and that cost one, a little over $1.2 million, and so the city had to come up with $600,000. The feds would come up with $600,000, and then we could do the certification. So that never happened.
Oh, that never happened.
It never happened. The city didn't have the money or chose not to do it. I don't know the history.
We chose not to do it.
And chose, and the WERDA grant really, it really wasn't, it wasn't the right pot of money to be looking for, looking at, so.
And the reality was, because we went to DC and met with all sorts of folks after spending money on lobbyists for years to try to get in line for that, and the real frank response was, you guys are the poster child, being proactive to go out and do this project, and we should be reimbursing you. We have all these other projects that need the money that aren't done yet, where people are in harm's way, and they're going to be priorities, so you're basically in the back of the line.
So it would have been throwing good money after that.
Right.
Correct.
Without, without-
Without having the certification from the Army Corps of Engineers, we weren't even in line. So without having that piece, it was-
It might be worth an inquiry about revisiting that, given the situation we're in now.
One of the-
Not paying lobbyists, just-
So one of the challenges with the Water Resources Development Act is it's one of those rare pieces of legislation that requires a two-step process. So with most, and it's a nasty word, called an earmark, most of the time you get into a bill, a federal bill that's approved by Congress, signed by the president, and the money trickles down to you. One of the things about the WERDA bill is it's a two-step process. First, you get authorized, of which the city actually did receive authorization. The second, and the much harder step, is being appropriated.
Right.
And it, WERDA is very much known as being earmarks. Earmarks are pretty much no longer done. In this day, there hasn't been a new Water Resources Development Act bill in many, many years, and there's none on the table right now.
Okay. So it's a dead end.
All right. Let me, let me see if I understand where we stand on Measure A. We've received to date approximately $18 million. That's your pie chart. And what we have coming to us in the future is another 4.5 million, best estimate.
Correct.
All right. And what approximately is the total outstanding loan amount on the state revolving fund loan as of this time, going to 2028?
With, with interest and, well, we're not paying interest anymore, it's administrative fees, it's 9.1 total is what we would owe. We just started making payments a couple of years ago. We've made, we've made a million dollars for the payments out of the general fund just last year and this year.
We've made approximately, in total, including that general fund allocation, just around $3 million worth of payments.
So-
Six left?
Yep.
About 6.3.
So we're at six, or we're still at nine? What's the number?
Six, we're about 6 million that we owe. So one of the thoughts was, if we got the 4.5 million, we could, we could pay it down early and avoid some of those administrative fees. So if we paid it down by 2018, 2019, we calculated, we could maybe save $600,000 or $700,000 in administrative fees. So we just took the whole lump sum and paid it down, rather than stretched it out to 2028.
Okay. Well, I'm hoping that can be part of the negotiation with the state revolving fund, because you would think they'd like to get the money back sooner rather than later.
Certainly. And, and one of the hopes also, as part of this conversation, and during the budget process, was we were hopeful to get the drawdowns early from Measure A, so that we could make the payments. We were making that unexpected $528,000 payment in 14, 15, out of general fund, and then we made it again for 15, 16. So we thought, oh, if we can get the drawdown early, we can pay it down. So as you can see, we don't even have enough money to pay the loan down. So, so even if we got the money and we repaid ourselves, you could, you could put the pain off for a little bit, but there's, bottom line is, the pie is too small. Doesn't matter how you cut the pie, we don't have enough money.
It would be really helpful to understand all this, to see a table that shows the different loan balances, where we think the funds are coming in from, and timing of that, and so that we can better understand strategy behind early payment, what we can avoid having to pay in fees, et cetera, and just be totally up to speed on sort of the dollars and cents.
Well, that'll be part of the solutions that we bring forward of how we get through this. So if, if we're able, before the forensic accountant is finished with his or her work, and we've come to negotiations with either a state revolving loan fund or Department of Water Resources, both of those would need contract amendments, and we would bring that before you to have those discussions and get your approval for any of those changes. And, and that could happen before the audit is, or the forensic accountant is finished with their report.
Okay. Any further questions of staff? You're not seeking any action from us tonight?
I think it's just a recommendation-
Oh, just a-
Recommendation to go ahead.
With a forensic accountant?
Right.
Yeah. Well, certainly, does anybody want to comment on that at this point? It seems, seems pretty clear, we need to go down that-
Got to do it.
-road and evaluate it, at least. And let me just add my two cents, too, and thanks, staff, and particularly Tracy, for what is a very well-done and comprehensive report. It's a report that I would hope our residents would take the time to read. It's a report that one needs to read about three times, and then it sinks in very well. It's, well, that's not a criticism of the report.
No.
It's a criticism, it's, it's just the world we live in with all these, with all these technical terms and, and alphabet soup and so on, but, but it is very clear, and, and I thought the city manager and her comments characterized very well what we potentially could face, and I don't intend to re-characterize it, other than to exhort staff to do their very best with these agencies, which I'm sure they will do, and, and there we are. Oh, a public comment. I forgot about public comment, but Mr. Ellsworth, I see you there.
Thank you. Jeff Ellsworth, 1434 Sylvaner. First of all, thank you, Jennifer and Tracy. I think it's great, and we all appreciate your digging into this, because we got to get, get to the bottom of it, and I think everybody's going to feel better when we do, so thank you. And I think it's great that we're, we're working with the state, proactively with the state. A thought was that, in terms of a firm that we decide to work and, and bring in, do we want to ask the state if there's somebody that they think is good, that they work well with, so that we all stay on the same page, and it's somebody that, that, you know, we work with them, and they work, we all work well together, so that it's not a sort of a separate operation that we then go back to the state with, so that as we're working with the state and the firm, it's kind of a all-together. That's just a thought. But I think that getting down to, and getting this past us, the only way to do it is go through it, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ellsworth. Any further public comment?
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to add one last comment.
I'm going to close the public hearing and-
Okay, sorry.
Go ahead.
Just that, I mean, thank you for all of your hard work, and, and that when we made the decision to hire the grants manager, there was some pushback in the public. Do we need, is this a position we need to be filling? And I think this is an example of the, of the opportunity, are the costs of not having a grants manager for a decade when we really, with a project of this size, it was an absolute must. And so to me, I think this reinforces the needs to have a solid, you know, grant writing, grant management, and grant monitoring within our city as we move forward.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with that. People, when they think of a grants manager, think of a person who writes grants, and they don't think of it in terms of a person that administers grants. And the administration, as we certainly hear, is powerfully important, and I know from conversations with the county, that at times, they decline to go after grants, because they don't want to subject themselves to the administration and to the audit impositions that could come from accepting the grants in the first place. So grant administration is a totally critical component, and obviously, we failed here. And, and this report is the proof. And this report is the proof. In any event, I suppose at this point, I'll entertain a motion that we, or I guess all you need is direction at this point, direction that you look into the hiring of a forensic accountant and bring us back an appropriate contract.
I agree to that. I don't know.
Okay with that?
Let's do it.
Yes, yes, yes.
And with that-
Is our three minutes up?
Yeah.
I think we're adjourned, right? Thank you very much, everybody.